Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April nineteenth. It's six oh two P M. And we're here for a work session. We will stand and we pledge allegiance to the meeting started. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution which stands where our nation and our God individual with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to honor the moment silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here at Avro. Thank you. Ms. Edwards, can we give a roll call, please?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McGuire. Trustee Back.
Present.
Is anybody, I have got anybody from Jim who was out here?
No.
Okay, thank you. So first thing on the agenda is new business. And first of all, down there is the family dollar. Notice hasn't been served. I had an email. I'm not sure if Roy was copied on it. About that family dollar on, on West Third Street. And the complaint I read, I saw was generated by the fire department. And the fire department has gone there and done a fire investigation and posted them with a, their paperwork, a complaint, where they need to clean it up. And then I went in and asked for the manager, talked with the manager, and got a verbal from him that he understood the situation. He had talked to corporate. Corporate's supposed to be some, sending somebody down, give the place a clean. So I did email the fire department in that. How you feel about this, Sheila, but I would, I think, and I can make a decision here, but I would like to give them a short period of time. Keep an eye on the place. If we don't see any improvement, we, the board and trustees, will also write them a letter. And give them notice, communicate with the fire department, what their deadline is, everything. We might have to give them a little more heat, but the place is a mess. It needs cleaned up.
Yeah, it normally is. I also emailed them and...
Family Dollar?
Family Dollar.
Right, yeah, okay.
And emailed corporate in addition to that because it's been like that for a very long time.
Oh, that is, I want to talk about this.
Yeah, and it's really sad to go in there. So, yes, I think we should give them a certain amount of time, but we need to give them like a deadline. And we need to at least have a date when we're, we're going to follow back up to make sure that corporate either contacted us or sent somebody down. And then after that, give them so many days after that day.
Yes, okay.
So that way we have a timeframe that we're giving them. So I think maybe family dollar. If we, we want to decide to give cor- corporate two weeks to get it cleaned up or whatever we decide.
Yeah, so the fire department's here because I need to see their deadline. Need to go aside, you know, I need to go aside.
Right.
Give them the first, they're the ones that brought my attention. They're the ones that posted the first notice. So give them time to react to that notice. If they don't react to that notice, then give them, then give them notice.
And as trustee over the code, that all works together.
Yes.
That too, get somebody in there and they can pick up from there. But yeah, it's been, it's been a mess like that for a long time. I'm glad someone's trying to do something about it.
Okay, so we're on the same page here. Next comment on, subject on old business is hiring the road department employees. We township presently have three employees that have started the hiring process. And it was a learning process for me also to learn people, to learn the steps to hire. I mean, being out in the field in construction for years, people always been hired for me. Hey, owners, hey, whoever, I got a guy who's going to be a good employee in two, three days, you're hired. And what's happened here, it's taken close to two weeks to go through the background check, the drug screen, the driver license check, and get the response there. And it's really irritating. I spoke to one of my guys today that's, you know, and I had me worried that a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of jobs out there. And they don't come back to me and say, hey, bye. You know, I applied for this. We agreed on terms and where you at? And I'm going to go look for something else. So I think we're going to try to do something, do something and we might make a variance, what was the word I was using there, Sheila? Then we make a change in the hiring process. There's so many jobs out there. There's so many people that are hiring that if you delay this process, you have a chance of missing out on the people. And we need, we need to put some people in the, into the, in the township. So we want to talk about a resolution that we have on the table to pass in the meeting. Basically just putting a...
A temporarily employment pause on the background check, check and the motor vehicle check. Because all the others came back. The drug test came back. So took the temporary pause on the requirements as noted in the handbook. Hiring process.
Yes, now, is this stated, I should note that. Is this stated in the handbook? Do we have a policy some place that per your background check, you can't hire, get hired if you have this or that? Is there any verbiage in the employee handbook? Is there any?
I don't believe there is. I haven't. There is not like any stipulations as to we're not going to hire people that are murderers.
Right, right. So...
Right, right.
But there again, it's also, you know, instances where somebody, you know, we might all have skeletons in our closet, done something in our previous life that we've gone on, we've never done it again. We had a boo-boo. We did something stupid. We were drunk. Whatever the case may be. And I'm not going to really hold that against a person myself.
Right, but it doesn't say anything like that, nor does it say on the application, have you committed a felony or misdemeanor? Doesn't say any of that on there, so...
I don't think that. Did the rules change? You can't ask that question, though?
Well, I'm not sure about that. I just know that it doesn't say on there.
Yeah, it did, and you can't ask that question.
Well, shit, and all that stuff that if you do a background check on these people, does that stuff come up in the first place?
Well, it's, it's certain things will come up, certain other things. People can have things expunged, you know, off the record. And then there are things that may have, people may have had, gotten in trouble years and years ago.
Well, if something's been expunged off somebody's record, then it's, it's not. It's done, you know?
Right.
They either went through the process
Right.
or completed what was necessary through the judicial system to have it expunged.
Right. I agree. I agree. So, so there, so this is just saying, because there are various agencies that are waiving the background check because people are not applying for jobs. And with us trying to get people who have applied for these jobs through the background check, it's taking forever to get that done. And so until we can get, if we can get them to start working, pending the results of any background check that they get, that would help out the township because we really need some people on the roads and zoning and code, all of those. We really need that. And so that's why we're talking about this right now.
It says for all non-fire personnel.
Well, that's what it says in the handbook. It's a, it was copied verbatim for that section. Section two point five A.
So when this is written, is it just the background check that we're, we're still doing the vehicle check and the drug screen? Is that correct at all, Roy?
Well, I'm sorry, say it again.
You're still doing all the checks. It's just that there's a delay. I mean, instead of waiting on those other ones, the drugs come out, what she said. And then the, not running the motor vehicle are being delayed. And then this is keeping us from hiring.
Yeah.
So this is kind of waving, waiting on these. This is kind of like a waiver, we wait on these two until, and then you have the right, once you get them, to make a decision.
Right.
So the employee knows that if they got something you guys don't like,
Right.
they, they may be out the door.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's, that's still, that verbiage is in the employee handbook now already. That if we find something, if you lied to us on the application, or if we find out something down the road that was not discussed in the initial application process, we have a right to turn it at you. That verbiage is in the employee handbook.
Yeah, but this is just waving and not waiting for it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
So if you're having, right here.
There too.
Yeah, there too. You got, okay. Yeah, it is, um, chapter two. I really got to page five right there. So there reads pre-employment background check and drug test. This is chapter two, section two point five, two point five A. All new employees shall be subject to a pre-employment background check. For all non-fire personnel, said background check shall include a search of available public records and justice web. For all fire personnel, in addition to the public record and justice web background check, an additional record check will be requested from Montgomery County Sheriff's Department. Two, five. All new employees of the road department and fire department shall be subject to a pre-employment ten panel drug test. And twenty five C, or two point five C, positive drug test results or previous records may be grounds for denial of employment. This determination must be done consistent with the state, with state and federal law and must be relevant to the position being sought. The township administrator shall be responsible for reviewing the results on each potential employee and making a determination whether sufficient grounds exist to deny employment. Yes.
So they don't have a ten panel check. They've never done that.
Okay.
So that's what we've got a lot of to take.
So that's how that reads.
Yes, that's how we will do it on the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Any other business? Anybody want to discuss?
Well, we have been talking about scheduling a date to sit down and talk about how we're going to spend our A R P funds.
Yes.
And I noticed that you put additional meetings. So I think that we have been talking about that. So I think that our next, the next meeting that we're going to add and that we talk about the A R P
Agreed.
and how we're going to spend the money for that.
Any other business?
So I have, this is up to you guys, of course, but that comprehensive service contract for the vehicle supply, for the bike that we have donated. My opinion, if you put the township on a contract, you guys should have done a resolution to accept that, this contract. Even though it's been signed and everything, this should be a resolution. Not sure if the authorities is going to say anything about that, that you guys may need to consider.
So when they, so they did that, was that last year?
No, that was, remember you went over and signed the piece of paper with?
Oh, yes, yes, with the lease on, uh huh, yes. So a resolution needs to be?
Well, it's a contract. You guys put, the trustee should have voted on that.
So is that a contract or is it a warranty?
It's a warranty, but you, you got a contract for, for services for five years. And you got a plan on it. That's a warranty.
So I'll just help me to, okay, because I think that they, they actually was, is this the renewal or is this the contract?
No, they didn't have, no, they didn't have protection. It was donated to them and then they bought a protection plan. And the contract was discounted.
Right, I remember Lisa saying that they, that they had given her a, a price and then she, they, we didn't do something within a time.
Yeah, and she said, she said we split, they were all in the contract. And that's what you had over there and signed.
Right.
But this, but again, it's a contract, an agreement you got. And it's for, what first year is paid, we haven't paid the money yet either. And we haven't paid the thirteen hundred. And then for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, you pay an annual fee of twelve thousand, twelve hundred seventy-six point seventy at each year.
It depends, it depends on the legal description of it. If it is a warranty, I don't think we have to sign it for it. But if it's a con, the township would be in a contract, yes, the trustees have to sign it.
You would have to agree, you would have to agree with that.
Yes.
If you want to check with legal, but I'm just cautioning you, you might want to check with.
Okay, well, that's...
And we still haven't made the payment yet, even though we signed a piece of paper, just due them with a payment.
Well, the payment, the first payment is not due until when?
The first annual payment is due upon expiration on the manufacturer's one-year warranty. Because nobody ever told me what that was. That's why I kept asking an email. But nobody ever told me what it was.
So I'll ignore that and I'm, I'm just looking oriented to see. Yeah, because this goes all the way back though, so starting, it says starting balance.
Initial one is thirteen hundred at the end of the warranty, but I don't know when the warranty, but...
Okay. Okay, I'll get with lease, because it says start date one seven twenty twenty-three, but that doesn't include that, the one year. Because the one year wasn't, so remember going back and forth about was it five years or was it four years? One year is on them. And then the additional four years is on us. Is that right?
The, the first year is on them. When that expires, then you have this five-year contract. But the first year is thirteen hundred dollars and the next four is twelve seventy-nine. Just because this is like that right here, this right here. This is a five-year.
Oh, you're looking at the email itself, okay. Yeah, okay.
That's what was kind of confusing. And we had the, the first annual payment is thirteen hundred and is due upon expiration of the manufacturer's one-year warranty. What was, when does it expire? If the chain of purchase, the company necessarily counted, just counted, probably was supposed to expire. Unless it expired fifteenth February twenty twenty-two. I don't know if that's what this means.
Well, I know it was, it was already, that was pretty much already in effect before I got here. So that, I think they had already, some kind of way they started this, like last year sometime.
Whenever they got donated, yeah.
Yeah.
And so they got the donation.
Right.
And they bought the warranty.
Right, so that's kind of like, I kind of came in the middle, so.
Well, I don't know anything about it.
Oh.
I don't know nothing about it.
Yeah.
And so I got this piece of paper handed to me at the meeting this year.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate your point of view on that because you're protecting us from getting a finding at the audit. If, if it is a contract, then we're going to get, you know, a right on that because we even, we have to sign all contracts. So I appreciate your point of view.
Okay.
Any other old business? The first thing I have on new business is actually old business, it doesn't, the point of view. So it's the wet fuel cars. And I've had several conversations with the county about that today.
Oh, you did?
Huh?
You talked to them?
Yeah, but yes and no. Actually, that's kind of more the person that, that runs the program. Whoever ran it before is no longer there.
That's the one.
Yes, that's the one, right. I don't say that, but yes, she's over there. So who, you know who's, who's running it now?
All I know is the lady I worked, that sent me the invoice. And, and then there's another guy's name she gave me, but my mind is not thinking of it right now. So I sent an email to them today to find out how we work to get these pins that everybody has to have. You know how the program works? Everybody has to have a pin.
Yes.
Cars go, I mean, these vehicles, the cars go with the vehicles.
Correct.
So when a person uses the card, they put their pin in and that's how you guys know when you see the report. That's how you know who got the gas for the car and what card it was, which vehicle it was for. Those cards are supposed to stay on each vehicle. Not even move from vehicle to vehicle.
Correct, and we're trying to do that in the fire department. But we have, we have a person that left. This was a pen, which nobody's using, supposedly nobody's using it. And we, then we had...
If she doesn't have a card, or he or she doesn't have a card, they, whoever, they don't have a card, the pin won't do any good. Because it goes with the, ties in with the township.
Well, I understand that, but
Yeah.
We were, the road department, they were all down the sharing of one pin. And now that person is left. So we actually have no valid cards in the road department.
Actually, I just, I like just gave you a new one. Maybe I didn't give it to you. I had to get a new one because nobody knew where one card was.
That's right.
So I canceled it.
I don't know if it was the Blazer or the Range, one of the two did have, did have a card. The other vehicle, like the truck, all vehicles have a card, but nobody has a pin. So...
Actually, yeah, I have a pin. They just don't know what it is.
Would you, would, should we let somebody else manage this system? You've got so much on your plate and everything doing. Should we find somebody else in the township to let them run these? Because as people come and go, as vehicle, whatever, there's a process and what I understand, and what I, the people I talk to, there's a process. And we, all we do electronically. So, but somebody, one person in our system to manage the wet fuel cars for our townships, who we get better control of who's buying what gas, if what vehicle.
So who do you propose to do? That's why we need an administrator. Because who do you propose to go and do that?
Right, I, I, I don't really support having somebody outside of Tracy doing it right now.
Okay.
Because initially, everybody was using somebody's car. And you just have a handle on it.
Right.
And until we get a, a handle on it, I don't think that that's a good idea to, because Tracy's already over that. But I do think that we need to, and I, and I believe this is it, that we got a list of everyone that were issued cards. Is that right?
That one's just the fire. Oh, no, that one should be everybody, that tab. Look, you're looking at the fire tab.
Right.
Okay, that is not everybody. Is this what, the blue card thing?
Yeah, but this, this was, this was a while ago, so because I remember...
Okay, so yeah, that's just the fires.
Yeah, so yeah, these are the vehicles that they, they were assigned to.
And I have, and I have the roads, we said handwritten, kind of for the roads.
Yes, right, right, yes.
And I have the cards for that. And I was working, going to work with the county to get new cards and everything, but we had to get out of there, then I had to put it aside.
That's fine.
Really need to, like, so in the road department, we all have one vehicle, needs a card. But we need pins.
Everybody has pins. Everybody just don't know what they are. So I can give you all the road pins. I got everybody's name. I mean, there's some people that are gone, but I...
Is there a way to remove their, their numbers? Do we need?
That's what I can send an email to. To them to find out how we get rid of those people. How do we add, like the road department had like twenty-some people that's come on and none of them have pins.
So Mike, you will like email Tracy a list of all the people that need pins?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, because there's nobody else who knew. They should have pins. They just need their number.
Well, come think of it, there's two, the two people that got promoted, they probably wouldn't have pins because they weren't, they were seasonal.
Yes.
So probably the only one that, that just left is the only one that would have a pin.
Yeah, and that's the only one that, and they were getting hired.
That's true.
Yeah, and, and the same is with the fire department. So maybe I'll get with you and whenever, when you get a chance, we schedule a date and go over it. That way, that'll give you...
The blue card is working on a list, give me our list of all the people that came in and that left.
Okay.
And we're going to update that. But in the meantime, I had an email to find out if I can do it or they have to do it. Because I, I can't, I didn't, they sent me the list back in, a year ago. They sent me the list of all the pins. But there's no way to go into the website and, and get them all. They had to send them to me.
Okay. Okay, well, we're good. I'm good with that, Jeff. So we, we got a handle on it, okay?
Well, I just had, I had to put it aside. I just didn't do it. It's the same thing with PCOR and, and TECSMO. Because everything's coming, everything had to get put to, on the side.
Everything got pushed because everything started off like in the year.
Okay, so that's the first article in new business. Okay, the second one I have is an R F P for background work and new hires. And then I guess I heard that, then I heard, I heard that they're actually going through a transition. One of the reasons they might be slow is they've got some secure check or the background check. We've got some kind of an internal, something going on and why, so give them a chance to get back on the game plan maybe?
Right, it's not a secure check that's holding it up. It is motor vehicles and D C I that's holding them up.
Okay.
Yeah, so I talked with Tim and he explained it to me. Because the, the drug test was, goes through Quest. And then the background check goes to D C I. Or if it's somebody from out of state, FBI. And then the motor vehicles goes through the other program.
Was it, was it a real public vehicle?
Yeah, it goes through them, so, no, B M B, yeah. That's what you said, duh.
In, in the history of Jefferson, have we ever asked our auto insurance company? Because I know there's employers that do that, that so we, we as a group, as a board, would not perform a vehicle background check, checking by a driver's license. You tell your insurance company, because they, because my boiler checks might have two years as it is, see if you got any tickets or anything. And there's employers out there that they just tell their insurance company and they do it. And they'll, oh, that's everything done here. I can save us a few bucks. Or they would, because they, the other ones want the information.
The administrator and administrator assistant always did this. No, I didn't. They never kept me in the loop or not. I just kind of had to dig and dig up some of this stuff myself as that disappeared. And I had to...
Well, maybe when I'm in the road, well, next time I pay our insurance bill, we'll ask for that. Because the other ones want the information, you know, that's why, unless they want insurance. Okay, so the next one on there is road work at potholes. We received...
Not going yet?
Well, we received an email and I've, I've gotten phone calls from customer, customers, excuse me, residents and myself. I, those places you go left to center or you go closer to ditch to miss potholes. And so I've reached out to a couple contracts suppliers, equipment suppliers, letting you know that I'll be spending under five grand. That I will be buying. So the way you properly do a pothole, and I did them years ago, is you got this egg-shaped, odd-shaped hole in the ground. It might be one layer or two layers thick. in the ground, it might be one layer or two layers thick, and you make it rectangle, but first you saw the thing out, did a good clean edge. We need to buy the equipment that makes hot seal. So you, but you can use cold seal or hot seal. And you'll use hot seal, cause it's rubberized, it has a better tack to it. So we have to buy that, we need to buy that equipment, you buy, uh, uh, it'll do like five gallons, ten gallons on propane torch. You get when it's in the back of a pickup truck, we need to buy that, and buy that here this, within the next week. And, um, then you put that in a portable little pot, and you go around, put it outside a hole, and you put it down below a hole. And then we send the, the little, uh, one-ton duck truck to, to the asphalt company.
Oh, okay.
And get some hot asphalt, put it there, we can, but we are going to start doing that, residents. We are gonna get these, these potholes fixed in this township, we're gonna drop it off.
Okay, so who's trained to do that?
I'm sorry?
Who's trained to do?
Oh, yeah.
You gonna do it by yourself?
No, well, I'm trained, I'm, I'm, I'm taking time off, we're gonna do some training.
Okay.
You're gonna train them?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, cause I know you said we're gonna do it, but.
No, no, I, I, no, I, oh, no, no, I cannot be off work anytime, as much, as many potholes doing this thing, but I can take several days off and get everybody kinda tuned in to what we need, here's the process you do. If you put a patch down, and you don't, I don't know how you gonna say it, if you don't put glue down, when they start driving over, what's gonna do, it'll come up. We got, we got, we got, we gotta do the job right, and I, and I know I, I've done this before, and it's not that hard, it's not rocket science, just, we just gotta teach guys how to do it, and do it, and start doing this ourselves in this township.
And I, I, I don't see, my, my concern is the money, because what happened when we had the salt issue? Remember the salt issue? All the salt was gone before, before the winter was even, for, on our first, first, just a couple of years.
That's before we had change of leadership too.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm concerned because.
Well, actually, right now.
That's history.
Actually, if you wanna talk about it, we will be, we have, we were scheduled to buy five hundred ton, and, um, we were contracted to buy five hundred ton. You had, you were supposed to buy eighty percent of that, okay? But also, the people we bought it from had a mind lapse, and there was some fatalities. And, um, they're buying salt, they cannot meet their demands. So I need to reach out to our supplier and find out if they're gonna, how tight they could hold us on to buying our bare minimum of salt issue, and if they don't, then we have to watch cash.
Tell them to send me some invoices.
You hear anything about that, in your own department?
No, I have not heard that, but I certainly, I don't.
Yeah, do a find out.
Um, I need them to send me invoices. They didn't send me invoices, they just sent me a list of saying that we didn't pack.
Huh?
They sent me an email that said.
I can give you the, uh.
You gave me the receipt, I need invoices from them, they just sent me, here's the invoice number, and this is what you, oh.
That's not me then, you, you just wire, just wired some invoice on.
If you, but you said you were gonna talk to them.
I'm sorry.
I sent them an email, they haven't responded, so I.